All right, welcome to the March ninth, two thousand and twenty-two board meeting. We are remote, so we will be following the remote meeting. Statute, so we have a select mentineo and myself select and real on this call, select memorali is not. And so we will be taking votes by roll call. Let's see, first on the agenda. Citizen statements and petitions. See any. Correspondence, we have two Eagle Scout citations. Lonnie, do you mind reading those?
No problem. So we have two citations, we have. I'll make sure I get these right. We have Aiden McCray and Andrew Nagda.
Looks like that, yes.
Alright, so there's one citation that comes in both.
Yes.
Okay, so Eagle Scout citation, whereas in this era when traditional precepts of faith and morality appear seriously threatened, it is refreshing to find wholesome American young men who support and respect sacred institutions. And whereas the Boy Scouts of America instills teamwork and leadership qualities, young men and women further promoting the development of strong character, good citizenship, and lasting friendship. And whereas the Boy Scouts of America have made vital contributions to the youth of Mendon through training the art of living in the great outdoors. While building self-reliance and whereas the scout Aiden McCray earned the minimum of twenty-one merit badges required and served his troop in a variety of leadership roles. Aiden has completed his Eagle Scout Leadership Service Project by installing a new brick wall to the BFW Memorial Flag in Upton. And whereas Scout Andrew Nagda earned the minimum of twenty-one merit badges required and serves his troop in a variety of leadership roles. Andrew has completed his Eagle Scout Service Project by building two new wooden kayak racks for the Mendon Town Park beachfront. Now therefore, we would like to order the town amendment Massachusetts due hereby in the state March nine, two thousand and twenty-two, award citations to Aiden McCray and Andrew Nagda. These scouts have completed all requirements required for Aaron Scouting's highest rank under the understanding leadership, I'm sorry, outstanding leadership and direction of scout masters and other adult leaders of Troop One Mendon, Massachusetts.
Excellent. It seems like we haven't had these in a while. Usually there's more of them, but it's good to see them back on the agenda. Okay, I'll take a motion.
Yeah. I move to award Eagle Scout citation to scouts Aiden McCray and Andrew Nagda.
Second, all in favor?
Tenio, I.
Real I. Thank you very much. Next, we have consider snow and ice deficit spend. Alan on?
Yeah, he's here.
All right.
Hi, good evening, everybody, everyone. All of you.
The whole lot.
And everyone, the whole bunch. Yeah, so I'm requesting the deficit spend at the point, at this point, right now, I have about twenty thousand nine thirty-four seventy-nine left in the budget, whereas the winter just doesn't seem to be quitting. And I do have some. I still have some invoices that need to be paid. So I'm. Gonna be. I'm gonna try for fifty thousand. Yeah, let's see what happens. If I need more, I'll come back, but at this time of the year, I'm hoping not. So that's what I'm asking for.
What's the, what's the current fine item? So we can?
One ninety-four.
So one ninety-four, so we're gonna go with one forty-four, right?
Yep.
I, I moved to authorize snow and ice deficit spending in the amount of a hundred. I should say up to a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, right? Or is that, am I wording that incorrectly? I feel like I might, I authorized snow and ice deficit, okay, I authorized snow and ice deficit spending in the amount of forty-four, sorry, fifty thousand dollars, correct? That's what it needs to be. Got it, thank you.
Second, all in favor?
Tenio, I.
Kim, I thought you were raising your hand now. Okay, real I. Passes unanimously. All right.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you very much.
No more snow.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Stone.
Okay, next, we have discuss name for eighteen Main Street Building. I remember reading about this. Who was on here for that? Kim is mouthing and pointing to the screen that I cannot see.
We got it. We got an email. I thought it was forwarded to us. Lonnie was at a meeting. It was, a name was recommended at that time. I feel like it came from the. Library Board of Trustees, potentially, about a name that we should consider.
Okay, so this is, yeah, I don't remember this now, sorry, I wouldn't, I'm not paying attention under the address. So we're talking about the Taft Building, the Tap, the old Tap Library, which is right next door to us, right here. And Carol Cooket sent an email, just speaking that referring to the old library as the library and was thinking that it would be nice to have a new name. The name that they thought would be appropriate is the Lauren Rose Building, and she was the first librarian. And I actually spoke with a member casually at the planning board, and they also thought it could be a good idea. Please don't know what you think. So I don't know if we, I totally think that's a great name. Mrs. Rhodes was also a math teacher in town. She was my math teacher, my homeroom teacher. So she did a lot for the community. The Rhodes family has done a lot for the community. I don't know that it's a bad choice, so. I had to pick, I'd pick it, but I also don't know if we should leave it open for other opportunities, as this was the only request that came.
Right, okay, so I think there was some question around whether or not that the building name can be changed. I mean, it's not the library anymore, so. It's not like we're changing the name of the library.
So if we have, just to check on that, there is a specific. I don't know if it's a deed or something like that, that's. That had to do with the library. I don't, I probably couldn't get my hands on it right now. I'm sure I have it somewhere in my notes, in my, in my, one of my folders. Maybe we want to just check that first, and we could discuss it at our next meeting and also put out there if there was anybody else that had any ideas. Again, I don't know.
We did have, right, we've had this discussion before, not too long ago, actually, so I want to say. Less than, maybe three years ago, right before the pandemic, we had some recommendations that were coming out of groups about names for the building. I think it's really important that we get together with the library and have this conversation, right? To make sure that, I mean, they would be the most knowledgeable, I would assume, about the history of the building and making sure that we're honoring the correct person, right? And even if it formally has to be named something like remain Taft, we could always name it something else, you know? Dedicate the building in honor of, right? And I think we'd also want to send something to the family to make sure that they were actually interested in something like that, just to be sure.
Okay, yeah.
I do think that this makes sense, if we can do it, because. Ms. Rhodes was well-known in the community. I graduated with her grandkids. So, you know, it's, it's interesting that her legacy continues to, to touch everyone, even many years after her passing. So it would be nice to be able to kind of reorganize and formalize the name of, of that building again and have everyone stop calling it the old library. So, sounds good.
Well, did we already be, did we already meet with the library for their budget?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so I was gonna say we could piggyback on that, but we can just also, we're gonna have the, I just asked him to come to one of our meetings, I think would be a great idea, the trustees.
Maybe, yeah, if, if you get to look through that paperwork and we can do it, well, probably not next week, but the next couple of weeks.
Okay, I'll see what I can find.
All right, great. Consider reappointment of Deborah Perro for Board of Registars.
I moved to reappoint Deborah Perro to the Board of Registars for a term to expire three thirty-one twenty-five.
Second, all in favor?
Is there a reason, should we, is there a reason it's an odd date? Can we, could we push it to? To expire on, you know, June thirtieth, so that it's in line with the rest of them?
Let me see, I have a letter from Alan here. Doesn't, it doesn't say why it's that date. Is Ellen on the call? I don't think she is.
Can I?
She's not on the call.
All right.
Can we just maybe we'll go back to it, I'll just text her.
Yeah, sounds good. Okay. Right, budget presentation, we're early for that. Review ATM draft warrant. Kim, you wanna bring us through that?
I do, let me just open it. Sent ten million emails in here. There we go. Okay.
I'll throw this, want me to share it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm having trouble getting my documents to open. Sorry, I don't know what the deal is. Opening and they keep opening and then crashing.
I hear it, yeah.
Very strange. Yeah, it's both my PDF and my Word.
Do you like to open a ticket?
Tomorrow.
It's probably that LG laptop.
It's probably that I just have ten billion things open on here, and they're finally revolting about being left open for so many days. Okay, here we go. Number one is the out of order, right? You gotta have a funding source for an article. So let me start by saying this, this is a draft of the warrant, super early draft, first draft, first pass. What we're doing here is just making a list, basically, of anything that's been submitted or even discussed for the selectmen to sort of review and see even if they want to, it wants to be left on there or not on left on there or whatever. There's still one more week for articles to come in, and we'll do a final review next Wednesday, okay? And even then, we can still have placeholders on the warrant for articles that we want with language finalizations to be approved later, but it has to be submitted. What's the print date, Laura? The fourth?
I need to have the warrant to the printer no later than Tuesday, the week of, it's the fifth, fourth, fifth, something like that, yes.
So for articles, if they're gonna come in, if they're not in now, and they need to be council-reviewed and then approved, post need to be back that first week of April, just anyone who's listening. Okay, Article One is out of order. You have to have a funding source for any article if you make a change. Article Two is the compensation for elected officials, that's boards and commissions that have, or town clerk, highway surveyor, tree warden. Three. Random, is this, is this a free transfer, real free fronts, is this a reserve fund for what? This is just the general reserve fund that we do now?
For the ensuing fiscal year.
Yeah, but what, I don't know what reserve fund this would be for. So typically, this would be further down on the warrant. But we'll see, is this, typically, the budget is here.
Which number?
For three, because it's not specific to a reserve. Not sure what reserve, what is that for, but we'll circle back. Chapter ninety to be able to spend, that's fairly typical. Scroll down. I'm just still, I haven't, okay, does? Yep, I can see it now. Yeah, well, it's, it's, it's like coming in in blocks, and then it's loading, it's fine. So yeah, for a specific inspection program, it's Article Six, so update valuation account, Article Seven, Police Grants, that's about twenty-five hundred. This looks like, this is chapter ninety, this is on here twice. That's gonna come out. Article Nine, Water Enterprise Fund, Article Ten, this is the purchase of, I believe this is the purchase. Nope, this is just a transfer. So what we do not want to do on this article, just to make note, we don't want to put these dollar amounts in here or these line numbers yet, okay? So just put whole placeholder for fire transfer. Okay. We'll do, we'll do those in the motion, not in the actual warrant as it's printed, just in case there's any change later, because one little mistake means it, it's invalid on the floor, just for anybody that's listening. Article eleven is for the brush truck, hundred seventy thousand. Article twelve. Money into, into money, police station building, stabilization fund for town hall campus. Okay, so this one, twelve thirteen. There might be another one, so we've talked about this a couple of times. We need to move money from previous capital projects into one new account for the town hall campus. And that's gonna be through some variety of transactions, which is gonna be. Taking the remaining money from the police station project and putting it into the same account, and then taking the money that we previously put from Complete Streets and Town Hall Campus into one account, all into one. Because you have to reappropriate capital expense, or especially from a bond to a new capital expense, and so we have to basically take three accounts and combine them into one new account. That's gonna happen on this warrant in some capacity. Fourteen looks like the limits on revolving funds, which we do every year, fifteen. Community preservation person, which we do every year, affordable housing. This one CPA for the police station. Okay, I don't, we'll have, I don't think we need to do this one in this capacity either. We do need to just budget in, it was one vote and one amount. Last year, we added an additional thirty, I think we can, we can combine that into one. So that's.
Question.
When the police, right.
Sorry, before I forget, on Article twelve, going back to that. Police Station Building Project Account to the Stabilization Fund?
Yeah, that's wrong. So it's, that's, that's why I was just generalizing, that what's on there, the, the two frums are kind of messed up. What has to happen is we have to move them from one account into another account, and then we also need to move the Inman Hill Road money potentially to another account, and then also take money from stabilization. It looks like the Town Hall Campus project right now is gonna come in about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're gonna have it bid in phases potentially to cut that number down, but we've got about. I don't know, three fifty on hand. We had talked previously a couple of times this past year about. Putting money aside for this project, we did do that, we put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into stabilization earlier in the year, knowing that we were gonna come back at some point, and we're at that point. To ask for some amount, some amount at town meeting in order to fund the project in its entirety. So that, all of these smaller accounts will be combined into one article. Somehow. Okay. Let's see. Police Station debt, so yes, that thirty thousand probably gets, that article, the thirty thousand probably gets combined into this one further down about seventeen, about the police station. It's just the amount that we pay, the portion of this police station project that was eligible for CPA. Gets, has to be moved from that account and approved every year. That's what that article is for anybody that's interested. Same thing for Fino, eighteen. Nineteen Historic has some things on here.
Wait, I thought wasn't.
The last year.
Our last payment, I thought we made our last payment on Pino.
I'll check, I'll check. There's also another, there's another smaller one, too. It's like eleven thousand dollars. Let's see, Historic, I don't know the details of these.
Are these the ones that keep?
No, this looks like. Forty C Extension District Study Report, Recommendations to Historic District, I don't, not sure what these are, we'll have to have somebody from Historic speak to those. Same thing.
Yeah, the next one's like.
Demolition delayed by law, we know we've reviewed a couple times. Good, Cindy, I tossed it to Cindy to review one more time. How are, how are we, Cindy?
It's on my desk.
Okay, great.
It'll be reviewed for next week.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Then we've got twenty-two Brook Blute Lane, except. Public Way, fine, that's Electing Road, Highway Surveyor Position to Electon, we talked about this. Do we want to do this this May, or do we want to review it another, at another time? Personally, I think it can wait, I'd rather work with Alan and figure out how we want to handle that, maybe do it in November, but it's up to you guys.
I would say, let's just leave it on there for now. It's just a big, it's a big item. Yes, I, I don't know if I'd want it in November, just personally, that's up to everybody, but personally, it's a pretty big item.
Right, and I'd rather not be doing it, changing it the year of an actual election, right? So this is the last year of his term, if we're gonna review it and possibly change it, maybe we should prioritize it for this one. Just let me know what you want to do on that. And then we have two RFPs that are out right now, details to follow, I can't really specify. They're both out, we expect the results of those to come in. Next week on the eighteenth, and so we'll have something to review the following meeting, so we might, we'll be leaving them on as placeholders. In the hopes that we get offers on both that we can consider and get permission to sell or do something at town meeting. What I don't see on this warrant that we absolutely need is an imperative, is the budget, so that should be up at the top somewhere.
The Article Four?
Yeah, typically, it's Article Four, so I'm feeling like whatever this chap, I feel like chapter ninety probably got copied over where the budget typically is, because it's on there twice, so. That goes there. Other than that. The only other things we've even kind of talked about in spending, we spent basically every cent of free cash already. So that's, we, well, I should say, we didn't spend it, we put it in stabilization to put aside for the Town Hall Campus Project, right? So we've only got about fifty thousand dollars left, so I don't have anything targeted for that specifically. There's a couple of capital projects that have been recommended or requested through the budget, we should have a conversation about how we would fund those, if so. And I can pull those aside, and we can do that next week when we're talking about the budget. And decide, you know, which, which ones, if any, you want to send to FinCom for a funding source. Other than that.
Do you think that it would be, I, I think what would be really helpful going into town meeting in regards to the. Campus project is just like a one-page. Information document that tells what the project is and the sources of the, the funds for it. So that it reduces the questions on town meeting floor about all these sources of money being moved around. I think that could be really helpful. Doesn't, obviously, it doesn't have to be complex, but I think it would be good.
Absolutely, I think it's necessary, because we are gonna be asking for an amount, which is probably, like I said, it was impossible to know initially, I'm frozen on the screen. It was impossible to know without, we've just finalized the designs, we're starting to get a cost estimate back, like I said, that estimate is, you know, six to seven fifty. With, and possibly gonna do some add-ons in there, and we've got about half of it in these other funds, and so there is gonna be a sizable request for probably fifty percent of the project from stabilization.
What's the grant?
So the MVP grant paid for the design. Right, the, the design. Now, we absolutely have a possibility of going out again and asking for more, but there's no guarantee, and obviously. At this point, we'd rather not delay the project, so.
It should be done, it's time to get that.
Right, we've, we've had money set aside for at least five years. In one of the funds from Complete Streets Town Hall Campus, and then we knew we'd have, we, we saved some money at the end of the, the. The police station project to finish the paving and the demo, and we've gotten a couple of earmarks from the state, I mean, we've got different, a lot of different creative funding sources, so that we didn't have to ask for a debt exclusion. And so we should be able to do it, plus we put aside that free cash two fifty and stabilization, so I think. I think we'll be able to do it within existing funds, which is really kind of exciting when you think about it, so.
Definitely. Okay, very good. Lonnie, have you heard from Ellen?
No.
Okay, all right.
Based upon the expiration date, I mean, we might be able to even defer it to next, next meeting if we have, just to get it in line with others.
Oh, that's true. Yeah, we can bump that over. Okay, anything on the block party? Is there any discussion there?
We can do that after the, it's six thirty-one.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to wrap up what we can, just, let's just do the meeting minutes, we have a couple of minutes till, till six thirty.
I moved to approve the meeting minutes of twelve, one twenty-one, and one twelve twenty-two.
Second. All in favor?
Tenio, I.
Real I. Okay. Now we can. Jump up to. School budget, is Jay on?
Yeah, I'll be open to FinCom, so open to FinCom meeting for March ninth, six thirty.
Hey guys, the link that I used was the FinCom agenda, so it's not that. Must be differently, oh, the Selectment Agenda, if you want, you want me to go through that, you know, because I'm on Teams now, waiting for the allow, yeah, no, go to, go to the Selectment Agenda. People that want to potentially watch the FinCom meeting.
You know what I'll do, is I can jump over, give me one sec.
If you want, I can get out of that link to go on to.
Yeah, if you want to jump on that one, I'll just push everybody over to this one.
So you're saying, say, on the one, I'm on.
Nope, go to the, go to the Selectment Agenda on the website.
So much work, sorry.
You guys should come sit here with us.
Yeah. I didn't know if we could come to the, you're, you're gonna want to mute your, yeah, microphone and speaker. How's everybody tonight? So that's the only way that I can share this, or you have the ability to share what we set out.
You can share it, or you can send it to me, however, I set it to Mike, the link, but you know what, let me, I'll just do it.
Correct. Select for. I saw you down to figure. Speakers are muted, great. I. Should be muted, right? Yeah, everything muted, great.
That's, we have the same, I don't know what link you have there, but.
I'm on now, right?
Martha's not. I see you there, yes. I see you there, yes.
Sure you don't just see me live sitting here?
You're, you're here and there. You're everywhere.
Start sharing. Give me a second because I don't know how to do the sharing. Settings. So you go to, check, oh, right here. This. And there. I want to show this. All right, go to this one here. It's amazing what technology can do. You guys ready for us to start or?
Yeah, go right ahead. Thank you.
Well, first, this is my first time in here to present, so excited and I'm wearing a superintendent. I know I watched some of your meetings and I've been able to kind of see how some of you operate and what goes on, but I'm really happy to be here, especially to be able to have the opportunity to talk about what we're doing in the schools and also the school budget and then work as, Jay and I work closely as a tag team, me and Jay, but we have a lot to share. We'll try, I'll try to go quickly enough through it, but if you want me to cycle back to a certain slide or something, we can, we can do that for you. So one thing we wanted to start off with, this is our budget development site. And one thing, if you haven't already gone to the page, if you go to the M U R C dot org web, webpage, you'll find this there, there, if you go to budget and finance. So what we've been trying to do is to be as transparent as possible about our budget process and our development process over the year, but beginning all the way back into October is when we start the process. And it had numerous meetings and presentations at our school community meetings, at budget sector community meetings, and we're trying to post all of that in those resources. So people, I know not everyone can attend meetings, we're able to access it. And you'll see throughout all of those are building upon one another. So that leads us to some of the preliminary budget presentation tonight that we'll share with you, but just to give you kind of the process that we go through as a school. Seriously, see it too. Now currently we have, every year we are required to submit our enrollment numbers to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And so we go by October one numbers and that's what drives a lot. Their data is every year when you see at any point you can go on to the website and see the past years of how our enrollment and population the years, but this is a snapshot by the numbers of what our student population looks like as we started this school year, but it's actually been changing over this year as well. And what we do is report out on all different subgroups and selected populations. And some of that also relates to the budget because when we build in after seventy and from the budget out, it's based off a lot of these populations as well too.
So I have a question back on the numbers. By that, into the budget, they're looking at the par, par professionals for special education, those had a dramatic decrease as well as transportation for special education. Is that due to our numbers decreasing?
We'll explain it. You're ahead of the game.
That's all good. Oh yeah, go to the next one. I keep, I was looking. And I'll go to the picture. Because what, we don't speak about numbers so much because we're talking students and those are our biggest clients that we have in the district. And this is just one snapshot about the, and Mendenupdiner first D experience. You can see all the different programs that we provide. I'll give a couple highlights through. I know this is a budget presentation, but you need to really understand the context of all the hard work that goes into our district and the outcomes really about there are student experiences and the focus on their experiences every single day. So when we were looking back, so as you know, I'm stepping into this role, you know, in this twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two year. And what's been interesting for me in looking back and reflecting on where we've been in the last few years and some of the hurdles and obstacles that we faced. And so I want to start, we had a strategic plan back. So I went back to two thousand and eighteen is when we launched our latest five-year strategic plan. Fire. And I'll talk a little bit about that as we connect it to our budget. But as we launch, we're eager, we're heading through and then we head into, you know, really it was in March of that twenty twenty, in that week that we had that initial shutdown a few years ago right now. So it's, it's interesting to see the, the path and the road that we have taken with different budget implications, but also all the adjustments that we've had to make within internally and our staff was just outstanding. So go to the next slide. It's not all, not all bad, not all challenging. Fight the challenges in working through a pandemic, which is, as you know, even here or in jobs that you have, has been difficult. We've made a lot of progress with our strategic plan and doing work for our students. And so some highlights in there, I started to run out of room and it's not really to list everything for you, but we've really been making a lot of progress. So one thing that I got of and received assistance from towns too, was the fact that now we are now one to one in the whole district, which really was a game changer. We needed to do that when we went hybrid and for remote as well with our students, but a lot of our education shifted to digital use of those devices there. So that is something really big for us. We've also had a lot of inclusion of our inspiring learning days civic action projects, which comes from the state. And we've done a lot of review of high quality instructional materials and investment, particularly the investment over the years at the elementary levels, so they can all have really strong, high quality core resources. Other things that we've added in, sorry, I may want to go. I want to highlight a couple of things though, because this is our return on investment here. We also have, if you ever watch any of our school meetings, a lot, what we've been talking about in the last couple of years is relates to our benchmark assessment systems and being able to track progress of how our students are doing in social emotional learning and their wellbeing and mental health. So we have, you know, our survey that would capture that and work with our students and get to know them. But the other cases, academics and better assessment systems that we didn't necessarily have before. And we needed to meet the needs and social emotional wellbeing needs of our, our students in the last year or in the pandemic, which was part of our budget requests in the last few years, or we've reallocated positions to support counseling and psychologists in-house. But we're excited going forward and talk about some of the things related to our strategic thing in, in the future too. Excited about ninety. What we wanted to do, I don't know if any of you have the students we just, that are entering the high school, but they just had a Nittany curriculum showcase last night. And this is, next three slides, I'm not going to read everyone for you and you can refer back to it, but really highlight when you think of our return on investment. You know, this is a pre-cated twelve system that has students from Mendenupdiner that we are providing all of these services for. And through our strategic plan and our work and the hard work of all of our staff members, we have incredible outcomes at the end of it. So when you look at, you know, our Nittany High School and you see what our kids can do and spend time with them, it's a really amazing experience that they have and they're so well prepared. You can see some references here about our D E C A program, which is around business, really hands-on experiences that they have. And if you go to the next slide, because we have a few of these. We were accepted just a few into a national organization, exemplary STEM schools. We had last year seventy-three of Nittany High School class was earned the honor of being recognized as A B scholars. We had one of five, probably more now than five, seventy-five student athletes who compete. And every year we're looking to see what other kind of offerings we have. Go to the next slide. And we recently were planning to have our inspiring learning day coming up at the high school. We just had a middle and elementary school and that's one way that we can really promote authentic learning, have our students, you know, be able to pursue their passions and connect with the community, bring people in there as well. Our art is incredible. Hopefully get to see some of our art shows that we have. But we, we really stand out as a school community and every year we update this and we have highlights every year that are similar to this because of the outcomes and because of the community efforts and investment in, in our school system over these years. Throwing some pictures in for middle and elementary, I could go on and on and on, which I won't, I promise, but I could go on and on about all the great things that happen every single day in our schools. A few things in the last few years, we've really had a lot of investment in some programming at elementary and SD Math, which is like a math supplemental program that I passed, Matt and New Math curriculum that is really, we're seeing, we just presented on our data, mid-year data. Huge improvement in our students at elementary as a result of some of that. And, and with our staffing, it provides that one-on-one, the small group supports that we need. We just had our music presenting at the last school committee meeting. Amazing, clearly you see that's a new program for them there. And we have an amazing inspired innovation center at the middle school that we're hoping to expand into the high school, something similar. That was the grant funded. Dr. D, my name is Director of Technology Innovation, spearheaded a grant for that. And then now we're just supporting it as we go. Throughout, and of course, we are known for our innovative spinners. One thing we wanted to emphasize, so if throughout the year this year, I had all of our departments in our schools present their own departmental budgets. And a piece of that, I wanted them to be able to highlight some of the efficiencies and reduction savings and real allocations that have been part of our budget process that maybe we haven't necessarily brought forward to share what we're doing. I know sometimes we get questions about the budgets going in this direction, what are you doing intern? You don't necessarily always advertise that and say all the things that we've done. So here is a list. I won't go through every single thing on it, but we spent some time talking about, we really are looking for, and so since we're here in Menden today to talk about, you know, are there shared services that we can have with municipal partners? That's a way that we, we can share services in different ways and then look for those types of opportunities. I know that we've been trying to shift away from some paper into some more digital assessments and processes as well, which is providing efficiencies and saving some money for us as well. And I mentioned before, we have to step, spend money for some contractual services that were external. And we've been trying to reallocate to have people on staff where they can provide more services, but for the same amount of money. So we, we've had some shifts in some of what we've been doing in our programming, especially in special ed. And the reductions, I never like to go through and list all the reductions because I, you never want to make reductions. When people ask the question, why are you adding staff, but you've had a decrease in enrollment? We, sometimes we allocate staff and sometimes we reduce staff. So some of those in there that you've seen in the last few years, grade five, grade five, grade six, those were enrollment reductions that we need to try to accommodate other needs such as, you know, if we needed a reading specialist because we didn't have that and it's a service that we need. Or we have other areas like the adjustment counselors that we do support and to help keep students school and help them transition into school. So we are, you may see some, you know, I'll share some of the staff requests that we have right now that will go to the school. In our requests, but we have some to meet some immune needs, but we also make other adjustments as well throughout the years. We also, Jay's great. He's always loves to save us money wherever we can. So one, you know, the solar net metering with one area and light bulbs, I mean, anything we can do, we're looking for that. Something that I know that I'm proud of, that of the work that I was doing as assistant superintendent and continue to do with our current assistant superintendent team. We are always looking for any sort of grant funds to help with one-time costs or to get something up and running. We, if it's out there, we are applying for it. And I have to really thank mention as well, because when some grants came through, some people reached out to us to say, hey, we're wearing this grant to the community and applies to schools. And we weren't. One time it was something that didn't come through, you know, destiny to us and then were able to go and apply and, and go after. So anytime that we can partner and say, hey, I think this to help you out can help us out, we all benefit from that as well. So I just wanted, you know, thank you for, for that. I think that's good. Yeah. You gotta keep me honest there. So what I had the team do is go through strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. So you can see specific, our presentations on the website, all of their categories that they worked on. But this is part of where our goal is to start build form of a five-year plan after this year to really start to project forward some of our goals. And that'll be aligned to our next strategic plan that we'll start planning for next year. But we want to try to adapt the model of being kind of a year-to-year type approach, which, you know, we're always year-to-year because things change every year. We didn't expect to be in a pandemic suddenly. However, we want some things we can predict, some things we do know are either opportunities out there or risks or threats that we want to address. So a few things, I can't, you know, say enough positive things about our talented and dedicated staff. If you come into, you know, our schools and I welcome you to come in if you haven't been in, you know, for a while, but we have one of the best around teams around and you can feel it from what we walk in any of our schools. And our parent collaboration support, parents have just been amazing. We're always looking for opportunities. We've had a newfound commitment to social emotional learning and that's health and wellbeing, particularly because of the pandemic and some of the trauma people have faced with that. So that I would say our strengths have been supporting high quality instructional materials. Some of the threats, if I jump to here, I think we know what a lot of these threats are and some of them will kind of play into our budget as well. But something that's come up that I, I just want to share too is every year that it's uncertain with the budget and we have teachers that may think they're going to lose their jobs. What happened this past year and, you know, in other years, sometimes they don't come back. The uncertainty is too much for them and we're seeing more teachers not staying through that. And we know, you know, in our district, it's, it's always kind of up, up and down. We, you know, it's, um, we understand that, but that definitely has been a threat that's been impacting our, our teaching and our staff. And, you know, we can't necessarily fix everything, but that's there. And we know that, we understand that there is limited funding in the two towns beyond, you know, some of our fixed costs, but we're always trying to look and look to collaborate and, and put the investments where we need to be. We definitely will be talking about aging infrastructure and some areas and facilities that's coming up in the future. And we have reduced the aids as well. For our weaknesses, some things that have been identified just in our programming. We know that we have a few areas in programming that we're not really fully meeting the needs in wishes of our community, of our original strategic plan and would be areas of strategic investment in the next few years around word language, some wellness you'll see at the middle school, as well as we have some limited technology offers, offerings, days offerings that students would like that, you know, we'd like to be able to provide. And opportunities, we think that there are always community partnerships that we would like to capitalize on and get engaged in. And we talked about sharing resources across schools perhaps, across neither two elementary schools, middle and high school, also with our municipal partners like yourself. So just to fill you in, this is a high level view of our strategic plan and our focus this year in our district. And we've had a focus on really understanding our students, reconnecting with them through a strength-based approach, where we to know them, nurture them, help them through these challenging times. And a lot of our work at the beginning of the year really has been focused on that. And then we've started to shift really into the support category. And we're trying to build what's called a multi-tiered systems of support, where we can really have a full system where we're meeting the needs of all of our students, no matter what needs that they are. And using data, which we're getting much better at to really inform instruction and get what they need. And then finally, what we're always proud of is just our engagement and always looking for innovative pathways for our students for meaningful learning and to capture our, you know, when they graduate, we have what's called the portion of the learner competencies, like the competencies that we all know when we go to our jobs, we know we need in, in this world today. And we want our students to be prepared. So that's the work that we do every day in the schools. So leading into the budget, how do we go through that budget development and develop our goals? And so this image kind of will encapsulate our process that we went through. So we always want to maintain level of services for our students, maintain class sizes, class sizes end up being the top priority for us as well as some of the programs that we don't have to cut from programs or reduce them in a way that we can provide a service that our students need. And then what comes up? And then what comes up, critical needs that will come up depending on what's happening in different years. And and that's part of our SWOT analysis, identifying some, you know, needs that show up. And also we have external mandates. We have a lot of state mandates and we can't argue with. Now, if we have to a certain number or a certain kind of resource, then we have to work that and fit that into our budget. Then we turn to strategic investments in the strength of our school district, which is multi or indeed the district that focuses on continuous improvement. Is the fact that we're always looking ahead for what our students need for tomorrow, for the next day, for when they left the week. And that we don't stay, it's not a, oh, we're good enough. It's, you know, how it always is, things are always evolving, especially in today's world. That's something that happened yesterday is going to involve and change by tomorrow. Right? So that is our focus for our students in partnering with students and what they need. So then get to here, this part where it's a partner with all two in Menden and Upton, leverage grants and see how that we can support and and fund the needs that we have. When I met with the leadership team, I had them go through and also prioritize, you know, if these are all the things, you know, we wish, you know, you have the, what could we do for students every day? What is front and center kind of planting flags is definitely optimal class size. And we always have to keep a close eye on that in different grade level programs. Obviously, student safety and support. Strategic best round robust office. Advantage that always received coming out of our school district and that, yeah, they fell and voted college or into the workplace. They want to go and we have the skills. So some of our key investments around for both staffing, on the bottom, there was a word that in the bluish are cost neutral, grant funded levels, but we wanted to add in to kind of show some areas. But to maintain level services, that optimal class size, that was that lower bar we worked through this process. We have an enrollment in need for a grade four teacher at Clough. In our restoration in grade five, also related to enrollment as well. Our critical needs, we had a proposal, we have an athletic trainer right now who's amazing, working part time. I'm not able to meet the needs of all of our athletes. And by moving that slightly from part time to full time, we'd be able to really work on the security, yeah, aside of safety keys and meet the needs of our athletes. Elementary assistant principal. And I have a lot of, just so you know, because we're not going to get it's like all these date me tonight, but at the end, and if we can answer questions, I have all supporting documents that you can read through with a background on it. This is something that has been requested. We used to have what's called a dean of students about maybe 10 or 11, that was cut out. But this has been requested for the last 10 years. We have put ahead of this request, you know, some teachers and counselors. But what we're finding is the various needs of our students that are occur in a school day. One person in managing the whole school, when you have a student who maybe bolts here and this situation happens here. And then the parent calls here and the meetings here. You, you need someone to help support that principal with all of those student needs, the safety needs. And so what we're, our proposal in the budgets and school community is that this elementary assistant principal will be shared. It's not ideal to have a shared administrator, but to be able to go back and forth and be able to support both schools. Particularly at Memorial, the numbers have increased. You'll see that in a moment, numbers later are increasing at the school where they're almost approaching five hundred students. Which normally, you know, you would have two administrators to do that. Plus there are about thirty five staff members that are being supported. So there's, yeah.
So that's the dean of students.
Yeah.
I gotta change the time. I didn't do that. That was kind of the question, what is dean of students?
And a big, a big difference too, just so people don't know the difference sometimes between a dean of students and assistant principal. Dean of students, I believe primarily works with students. And they're not in like administrator in the sense they can't evaluate, there are certain things they can't do. They can't evaluate and do kind of the supervision with the staff. So they can provide one need, but really we need an assistant principal who can provide more instructional leadership piece as well. The critical needs handed in position, so I'm sure you might be familiar. We had cut the library media specos in one of the budget cuts a few years ago. That is a requirement through our re-asset foundation in high school. We were able to bring in an aide to help out and she's been fabulous, but we have to meet that need. And so that is a restoration. And a wellness teacher at the middle school and I, there's a lot of data in there as well. But what we had in at the middle school, the way the sessions work, we have, let's say, two PE teachers, two art teachers, two bands, two cores, like what am I missing? Two technology, right? Because that is how you can meet the needs of all the students of, you know, over seven hundred students, right? We have one health teacher. So what happens is she meets her health to be provided or wellness to be provided, which is a mandated standard requirement to get it every year. She can, they can only get it for fifteen, you know, sessions. That's how much health we're providing middle schoolers right now and wellness. And it's just, you're not able to meet the needs and and people are, and students are missing out. So that's kind of where that's coming from. And that's been requested quite for quite some time. The biggest strategic improvement of us offering category that we have here is related to computer science. And so our math teachers have been taking on and offering some computer science and built up some momentum. And now they have a continuum and we've been tried, applied and received some grants through Project Lead the Way. And they're working on innovation pathway to support the materials that go along with this. But our goal in, have invested through the inspired innovation center at the middle school around, around computer science and around technology and robotics. And we started there and now we're building that up through the high school. And so this provides that opportunity and builds that pathway for students in that area. And going along with that, we have some secrets for esports and robotics club too. Requested in our budget as well. I just want to mention the English language teacher. So we used to, when I started, a number of English language learners, maybe we had like twenty. And I, I'm in my ninth year now in the district. And now we're up to sixty, seventy every day. You know, even we have Ukrainian refugees who are actually coming in next, next week, correct, on route right now, who don't speak any English. It's, it's, you know, our, some demographics are shifting and what happens there, we're required, obviously want to provide all of our students what they need. But we're required a certain number of minutes to provide an English instruction. And if you're a newcomer, it's called like, you come in just from a country and don't speak any English, it's, it's even more, you have to provide. So what we're using for S R three, we, this is the only thing we're doing that isn't a one time, you know, fine use in S R three is to pay for that English language teacher to get us through the next couple of years. And that was something that fell into S R three that we could do for that grant.
A quick question on the, the tech support staff shared with costs with service without those there?
Yeah, so we've been working to share a tech support staff member. It's, we're still working on the details of it. They had a proposal to shift where we would have a staff member who would be able to kind of work underneath, you know, Joel Lake, who's in our district director, to help operations, but be able to provide help and services when they need it at the municipal center in some of those areas. So could be stationed like at, say, Memorial Elementary School. And then be able to have some time to meet the needs and then come back as well. So what we've had in the last couple of years have been a request for a tech support staff for our district because it was cut out of the budget, I don't know what year, I can't, it was two years, two years ago. And what we're finding, so that was one way that we helped, you know, with the budget and we reduced that staff position. But what's happened now, our device numbers have gone from here to here and we, we need it. So it came to us and asked if there would be a way that we could kind of do a shared service. So we're still working through that. Any other questions on this one? Okay, I know you want numbers, we'll get to it. I'm not going to go through all this, this is for your info, you can go through. But just really wanted to give a sense, you know, we give line items, right? But in those line items that you look at, sometimes you don't know whatever, what it is for, you know, or what the, the big areas are. So what we tried to do pulling from our presentations is just give you a sense of, you know, what these investments and what the money is supporting previously. And that wasn't just last year, it's just kind of over the last number of years. What in our current budget are some of the things that we've invested in? So, you know, good example in music, they have a set budget and they prioritize different instruments and different needs each year. And then the next year they re-support something differently. In the future planning, these are some of the things that we have identified as future needs or people have put in your request now that, you know, we're not putting into our budget right now, but we know we'll, we'll have to meet in the future as well. So that just gives you kind of a bit of a snapshot. It's not everything, but it gives you some of that. So heading into the numbers part, so our FY twenty three initial budget proposal, you can see it's over thirty nine million, nine thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars. And this is a two point one percent increase over our last year's request. So what we're going to do, this is where I hand it off the numbers. So the numbers guy here, Jay, and he's going to walk you through some of the, the state piece, the development around, you know, revenue and our estimates and then we'll answer any questions. I think we're just providing that input for you here, our do it best.
All right, so state budget. Hi everybody, by the way, I'm Jay. State budget came out from the governor at the end of January. There's three main areas that support the school district outside of chapter seventy. One is regional transportation. You know, the governor's budget is about five million dollars less than the current year's budget. And that's impacted us as far as our state revenue and you'll see that in a couple of minutes. I do expect that to go up with the House and the Senate and traditionally does. But right now, all we have is the governor's. Circuit breaker, we are actually a year ahead in circuit breaker in that what we received this year for our reimbursement is what we will appropriate for next year to offset the district tuition. So it gives us a little bit of a push in of each year, knowing what that fixed number is as far as revenue. And then charter school, charter school is always a, it's always a various number. Your question or it's just? Okay. Charter school, we have students in Menden and Upton that attend charter schools. We're required to pay that tuition, we do get a reimbursement for it, it's pretty minimal what we get back. The cost is not exorbitant, but it's, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars for next year. All right, state aid, chapter seventy, we are what's called a minimum district. That means that we are still below our target share. Target share, I know you've heard about this ad nauseam in the past. Is basically the percentage they feel the towns can afford to pay of the school district budget as opposed to state aid. The state average is fifty nine percent, local forty one percent state aid. We're at about seventy five percent right now, I think we should be at seventy eight percent. Because of that, we will never get more than thirty dollars a student based on our enrollment. So we're getting sixty two thousand three seventy as an increase in chapter seventy. I don't expect that to change unless something changes in how they do that. Transportation reimbursement, you can see there, we're looking at about a negative eighty nine thousand from this year to next year, but I do hope that that's going to change. Part of the reason for that, well, they've lowered the reimbursement right now in the governor's budget. But last year, we negotiated some better pricing based on the fact that we were hybrid for part of the year. They base the reimbursement on what we actually spent, not what we budget. And since we spent less last year, we don't get less. It's kind of a catch twenty two. I do expect that to go up, the charter reimbursement. I want to say we have about eight or nine students at charter schools. This is what we get is there's talking about fifty one thousand, which is an increase from this year. But I found last year that that number started out at twenty two thousand, went up to like fifty eight thousand, went back down to twenty four thousand as it worked its way through this, the governor, the house to the senate, the final budget. So that's state aid. So the bottom line is that we are getting a whopping four hundred and seventy six dollars more next year than we got this year. So we will try to make sure that we spend that wisely, but that's it. So basically, we're getting nothing in state aid, no increase, it's level funded, I don't consider four hundred and seventy six dollars much.
This is why I put it in threat sense.
Right.
It's an extra little threat of less state.
All right, so now on the budget side, and this is on the revenue side, the school district is going to increase its E and D appropriation from six hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand next year. I'm fairly comfortable doing that, we certified fairly strong because of how we finished last year because of the hybrid model. The vision program is a program that we run where we provide vision services to other school districts that they pay us for. We always budget around seventy five thousand for that as revenue. In most cases, we get a little bit more than that, but it's hard to say, so we just kind of stick with that same number. The debt service bond premium is something that when we refi, when we refinanced and refunded the memorial, clock memorial and missco project, do that, they give you a bond premium which you then use to offset interest. We've only got two years left, so there's not much left to offset it, but there's a little bit of a decrease there. Transferring from revolving, we have three or four what we call enterprise type revolving accounts, mostly the torn after school program, the daycare center that generate income, we appropriate out of that as a revenue source to help support the district. We've never funded interest as a revenue stream, we're going to do it this year. We typically make between ten and twelve thousand a year on the money we have in the bank. So we're going to put it in as a revenue stream this year. Medicaid reimbursement, we're bringing up by twenty five thousand. That's been really good in the last couple of years. It was a period where they were decreasing it year after year after year. In the last couple of years, it's gone back up and there's a lot more things eligible to be reimbursed for, it's Medicaid. And basically, the services we provide to any student who's Medicaid eligible. Where they go to the nurse, anything like that, so those kinds of services, special ed services, anything at all. So we're pretty aggressive with that. Basically, looking at about a hundred and thirty four thousand is an increase from our perspective from district self funding. From the town of Upton, middle and local contribution is what drives the local assessment. Town men, town of Upton was hit pretty hard, they're looking at a five hundred and sixty two thousand, five hundred one dollar increase. So you take that, transportation is the cost of transportation outside of what we get for state aid and operational additional. They're looking at approximately a five hundred thousand dollar increase on their side, not counting the debt service. Debt service is going down, so their net's about five twenty. That's the Upton piece. Menden was a little bit better off in that you only got a two hundred and thirty eight thousand dollar increase on your minimum local contribution. Again, transportation, operational additional are saying things from the previous stuff. So the town amended is looking at a net hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and ninety three dollar increase on the operation side. Again, debt service is down about fifteen thousand. So your debt is a hundred and sixty four four one that we're telling up ended. Before I go on, is it, is there questions on those numbers there? Okay. So bottom line is we're looking at an eight hundred nineteen thousand, four seventy eight increase, two point one. Then the other things that we use to offset operational costs, school choice. As you know, we're a school choice district, we generally profit about five or six hundred thousand dollars a year, depending on the year. Choice numbers were down the last couple of years because of the pandemic. I expect them to go back up a little bit, but we're still decreasing our appropriation based on the fact that there's not as much money there and it's kind of one time money, but it is a recurring cost in that we generally generate a profit every single year. The circuit breaker reimbursement is what I talked about previously to that. This current year, we're going to receive eight hundred ninety six thousand, so that's next year's appropriation that specifically goes to offset our district tuition. School of choice appropriation offsets the four teacher, classroom teacher, regular educational, which you'll see, you know, in the function codes there. There's four lines for that. These are all the other various sources of revenue that we have. So these five grants here that you see listed, these are entitlement grants that we get every single year. The two forty grant is what pays for paraprofessional salaries. That's one of the offsets that we have, so they're not in the budget, they're paid out of the grant, they're not in the general ledger. The early childhood one pays for one paraprofessional that's in one of our preschool programs. Title one is based on low income and provides academic support. Only schools that qualify for title one are Memorial and Missco. Title two A is professional development, teacher quality. And again, you'll see that I've got a little bit of a decrease in all of those. Quite honestly, it's a guess that I, you know, I say five twenty five for the two forty code, it was five thirty six this year. It could get back up to five thirty six, we don't get these numbers till August, September. Possibly what we're looking at, title four, we've used for a couple of software, like assessment type two. Title four, we've used for a couple of software, um like assessment type tools. What what is title four supposed?
There are many categories. It could be, let's say, one of the categories is social motion wellness. And so, you know, for example, do something on this, can we have a survey, survey for students or their well being or other surveys that we provide? That's something that we're qualified under title four and it's around that amount. So usually just any of those that we try to cover with it because it fits.
And it's been ten thousand.
And we've only had it, yeah, and it only came into play, the title four, just. Yeah, three or four years ago and it just remained at ten thousand.
Alright, other grants, these are all pandemic related grants. Some of them will continue for two or three years, others are this year or last year and that's it. The summer school expansion was a grant last year. We don't know if it's gonna be existence again for FY twenty three. SR two and SR three, those are, we had SR one that was used last year, SR two and three, SR two go through twenty two and twenty three. SR three can actually go through FY twenty four. The amounts you see there are basically the total grants to, um we are probably not gonna spend all two hundred and thirty four thousand FY twenty two. Just got approved in January, so probably have some that will carry it to FY twenty four. Right? Um the after school was something that was relative new, um did last summer. We don't expect that to continue going on. These are other ARCA related uh grants that were special education related, two fifty two and two sixty four that we got this year. There are some contracted services to get us caught up on some of the assessments that we couldn't do during the pandemic. The acceleration, math acceleration was basically a program we ran in February break. We're gonna run in spring break in April. Again, it's a one time thing, using it to help supplement kids that can help certain, you know, if they fall behind academically. This federal emergency connectivity fund is something that Joe Lake, you and David Quinn applied for federal government. We are using it, it specifically was only to buy devices or students or I think it was all. We are replacing the iPads grade seven to twelve with this and I think some math books for some of our paraprofessionals. I, it's again a one time thing for a one time purchase. As a matter of fact, we just got an email today saying that everything's all set, it's coming our way, which is what I like to hear. It's checks and. Alright, so that's the revenue side. Expenditure side, this is where it gets back to your question. Salaries, we have a two and a half percent COLA for all of our associations, um plus steps and lanes. It adds up to about nine hundred and eighty three thousand. The new positions that Marie talked about are about another four hundred and twenty seven thousand. Health insurance, right now, they're telling us a nine point six percent increase, but we haven't settled on any yet and we have some options. But based on that, that's what our increase would look like. To retirement, which I know you guys get as well, nine point six percent increase. Transportation is in the contracts and we're all set there. The two big numbers that are gonna help offset that and make this work is out of district tuition, transportation. We had a reduction of seven kids as far as out of district placements that added up to about three hundred and twenty thirty thousand. Transportation was the equivalent of that, which adds up to seven, ten, when you put them both together. We have still within the budget, some room for some additional growth. But we, it's not as as flexible as I'd like to right now. I think we're okay with it. And then what you would ask about like the uh paraprofessional salaries that dropped. Federal government has this tricky little thing called maintenance of effort. So maintenance of effort means that if you spend a hundred dollars on special education this fiscal year, the next year you have to spend at least that hundred again. You can't increase it unless you have something that dramatically changed. So last year, because of the pandemic, because previous year, we didn't pay transportation for our job. For kids that weren't attending school last year. We're gonna meet our maintenance of efforts. So Department of Ed said to us, you know what? Here's what we tell you to take a forty grand and if you can't keep your budget, pay for those things out of your budget and save it into the grant, carry it over to next year, which is what we did. Now, of course, we're gonna use that money this year, have to use it this year, carry this year's money over to next. That's why you saw the reduction to operate, operational budget is because of. That make sense? Yeah, so the way I'm reading it in this document, it almost felt like there was a reduction of staff. Right. Actually, right now, we're probably down about seven or eight of this bring here. That's mostly not because we don't have people for the staff, can't find people who want to take the jobs. Okay, we've been advertising to paraprofessionals, custodians, things like that all year and we're getting no applications at all. People are taking the jobs, coming to work one day and then not showing up and saying that, I don't think I really want to do this. It's just, it's really hard. It's not a problem. So those two reductions or those two, you know, that you see as credits based there, what's gonna make this budget work for this year. And that's what we get to this, you know, nineteen or seventy. This little pie chart, I was probably, I'm not big on pie charts. It kind of shows based on the state categories, how the state has function codes for how we spend money, where our money is spent. So we're spending fifty one percent on instruction, about three percent on administration. You guys can be in charge yourselves, but it's just a nice little visual of how a budget kind of breaks out. So variables, we basically, our expenditures and revenues, our balance is at this point in time. We still have potential for a better rate on health insurance in nine point six percent and I anticipate that it will get better. We do have some options, but we're still discussing. It's not a great thing. And then I'm still hoping for more regional transportation reimbursement. So those will potentially be additional revenue that would help offset any other costs. Because right now, the budget, I always like to have what I call some protection in the budget in case something changes, have an issue you have to deal with. And there's not as much there as I prefer to have. So um this kind of helps offset that, assuming these things can, you know, come in play. Now, one of our big threats, and we'll have to talk about this probably at a later date, but I'll run through it first, is Norfolk Ag. You all know that students in Mendon and Upton can choose to go to a non-resident vocational school. They can only go to another vocational like Tri County, Keefe Tech or one of those places if he doesn't offer the program. Norfolk Ag is a little bit different that they offer programs that really you need to an agricultural school. We currently have eleven students at Norfolk Ag in this current year. We are, we have two of the eleven, two are graduating, we're gonna drop down to nine. We have um eleven applications currently pending, but I've been told that ten of the eleven potentially qualify to be accepted. They typically don't accept more than four. A lot of times, kids that apply there, apply to every vocational school they can, that's what they're working. And they end up either, maybe they get into something else, but right now, that's where we stand. In the budget, I've got nine students returning and I budgeted for the four that typically historically have always had. But there's a risk that more than four students are gonna get accepted and that's kind of a little bit of a dangerous situation for us. Um the tuition there is about twenty five thousand piece, actually, you can see FY twenty three, twenty four, five seventy two. If they receive special ed services, that kind of six or hundred, top of that. We do have a great deal on transportation. It's a route that I actually coordinate through the superintendent's consortium, the Blackstone Valley. So we run a bus that picks up ten different districts, kids all in one shot and it takes them over there. So we spend around thirty thousand a year for that bus as opposed to if we had sent one kid and we had to pay for it all by ourselves, we'd be probably talking at two hundred and fifty dollars a day, so forty five, fifty thousand. So it's a really good deal for us as far as that goes. The thing about the non-resident Norfolk Ag is that the law says that the bill for tuition is supposed to go to you guys. And the transportation bill is supposed to go to you guys and not us. And you guys get chapter seventy money as revenue for the students. So I'm still trying to sort out the way it's always been done. We just absorb the cost, the chapter seventy money that the town receives is just revenue to the town and it's part of the money that you have to spend. But as it continues to grow, the state is beginning to tell us, no, these bills shouldn't be going here, they should be going to you guys. I haven't sorted it out yet, so I'm putting it on your radar. You may be looking to change how this works or we may have to change how this works, probably not for twenty three, but maybe for twenty four. To just keep it in the back of your head. A lot is thinking.
So we were saying, we're getting chapter seventy money because the money comes to us and then we cut you the check back.
Well, no, it's just part of your revenue. You just give us the assessment that we charge, we've never delineated out, this is Norfolk Ag or anything like that.
You know, like with BBT, that just directly goes to the town. Right, and then you have that assessment for BBT. So what we're being informed is that the way that we're doing it or have been doing it, it it should actually go to the town. So that was sort of a, a very, I mean, within the last, it's a discovery and and some things. But, you know, we'll work through it, but wanted to kind of put it on the radar and also give a sense of where we are kind of with numbers and a sense of, you know, numbers and the terminology and all that. And and Jay's, you know, talking to everyone at the state, just getting a sense around the laws and.
Sure, how many of those, is that?
Yeah, so here.
The numbers are up there. So right now, Mendon has seven kids.
Who likes just men, seven kids.
Seven kids, Upton has, um Upton has four, so that's eleven this year. Next year, it's gonna be six and three, but there's seven applications from Upton, four from Mendon. We're not gonna get answers on what our enrollment is. Generally, it's late July, early August before we get a final one, which is way beyond when the budget is certified. I have gone to the state a couple of times, not just about this, but some other things where they don't tell us after we certify our budget and it just doesn't seem to go anywhere. Sure. I even ran it in Mark once when I was down there testifying in hearing, he was wandering the halls aimlessly. He said he was doing something important.
No, I didn't know what I was doing, just looking.
Yeah, no, he was just bossed. Where am I? Alright, other potential issues that we're gonna face. We do have currently one application for Tri County. Again, I have no idea where that's gonna go, the tuition there, this current year is seventeen thousand, six hundred and something. And so I rounded up to eighteen thousand because I'm sure it would go up. But that's where I, you know, show you, if we had one kid go there, we have to transport him and it could run about forty six, forty seven thousand dollars for the one student. We still have some students in evaluation process related to out of districts. You know, we do the best we can to provide services in district, which is still an unknown. And the move in law, so the move in law is if somebody moves into Mendon or Upton prior to April one, we own the tuition for next year. They move in April second, the sending district where they came from owns the tuition. That's something that I did try to have changed like February and when it didn't go again, because finding out, you know, we certify our budget May fourteenth and we found, or March fourteenth and we find out March twenty eighth, we have a free one thousand dollar tuition. We're out of luck, we just have to pay. And then enrollment, you never know what who's gonna move in over the summer as far as quantities, you know, houses are changing, although there's not a lot for sale right now in Mendon. And then the facility issues, I know that you guys at the town level are dealing with water issues in PFAS six, which is the new contaminant that DEP has identified in water. We are in the throes of that right now at Misco and Clough. Uh we're looking at probably a possible about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the treatment system to treat, treat it. But things continue to happen, things continue to change, um pretty much on a daily basis with that. And then the buildings, I know it appears that the buildings are new, but Nipmuck is now twenty six years old. And certain things are starting to fail, we're replacing the boilers right now, but there's HVAC issues there. There's a computer management system that runs the system that runs the HVAC controls that was installed in ninety seven and you can't get parts for it, it's obsolete. That's gonna need to be replaced. We just did a hot water tank at Nipmuck, the hot water tank at Misco is gonna need to be replaced. And then lastly, even before the last two weeks, the cost of oil and gas is considerably more this current fiscal year than it was a year ago. Last year, I paid a dollar sixty seven for oil with the street industry, getting that deal this year. So those are some of the things that were sort of like risks for us that we're gonna have to deal with and, you know, kind of make us a little bit uneasy.
Is this some, sorry, the tuition to Tri County, is that the same situation?
So yeah, theoretically, it should be going to you, not us, but for now, I, we're not gonna probably change anything this current fiscal year because I just think it's the right thing to do. But I, we just want to put it on your radar, probably gonna have to have a conversation on that in the fall for future years. Alright, other things we still don't know is, you know, health insurance, non-resident tuition, the House and Senate budget could increase revenue. You still could have people that retire, you know, if somebody retires at a higher salary, you typically fill it with a newer, younger teacher that's gonna get paid less to start. Enrollment, kindergarten registration, which I think is pretty well closed, but that doesn't mean if somebody moves into Mendon in May and they have a kindergarten, they're not allowed to register because they are. So those are some of the other things that are still there. And then as far as next steps, um we had a budget subcommittee meeting Monday, we are here tonight. Uh our hearing is next Monday night, you're all welcome, basically hear the same presentation. Answer all your questions. The House budget is typically out in late April, the Senate budget sometimes in late May. Sometimes the House and Senate, the last couple of years, they've gotten together and come up with, this is what we're doing for education and then we know, but we won't have any of that for probably another month. And then the town meetings, Upton is Thursday, May fifth, Mendon is Friday, May sixth. So those are some of the other big dates that we have coming up. And then beyond that is all the additional information that we're not gonna run through tonight that has, you know, things like enrollment and all kinds of things like that. So you guys, I did share with Mike, through my, this entire presentation, so you guys can look at that.
Overall, the enrollment, is it going trending up or down?
Yeah, it's a good, good question. Can you go to? Yeah, I don't think I have the previous, I can't tell you though. So it is trending down the last ten years, now it's trending up the next ten years. So we're in the midpoint according to the projected enrollment. So it'll be about the same the next year or so and then it starts to continuously go up. If you go to the next slide, which is kind of staying up, is um the combined projected enrollment. I know it's a little small there. Basically, you can see there's this, it used to be that Mendon and Upton closer in their percentages. And you see a much greater enrollment that's happening in Upton. And so if you'll see it, it's showing up now at Memorial preschool and it's affecting class sizes, et cetera. And, you know, students are coming in and it's starting to, you know, act with enrollment.
One of the things that's happening on enrollment is like I moved into town, which was in the late eighties. There was a big huge growth, a lot of kids were coming in, that's why the high school got built, that's why the elementary schools got built. We were adding a hundred and fifty kids a year to that point. A lot of us that are my generation, our kids are now out of school, we're still here in town. But, you know, you hear a lot of talk of, well, you should build over five fifty five housing because it doesn't hurt, you know, schools, like it doesn't climb our costs. But the reality is, when I sell my house, if I ever do and move into that over fifty five housing, more than likely who buys my house is a family of children. So the kids are still coming and I think you're gonna start to see that at moments because my generation fades away and the next generation comes in.
There's also, you know, in in Upton too, they're building, uh not so much subdivisions too, that they're building, like lowest to build that apartment, apartment, the apartment building there. Definitely they're building another one right now, that has high density effect of possible students coming in as well. Because that's on what you're putting on the.
Three house lots suddenly have thirty kids. Right, so there's a, that could be a, an effect of that as well.
Yeah, and they, in our, just so you know, it's not unusual that we've been in this slight decline over the last, you know, six years or seven years, whatever. If they, they're seeing that mistake, particularly in more rural communities, there's just been this gradual decline, but in 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 general. But you're, you're gonna see, as you can see, they're projecting it. And I'm starting, even though it's not showing up in the overall numbers, when we have kindergarten, you know, coming in or during the year. It's now, oh, we have another second grade student, oh, another family just moved in, oh, we have someone who's starting yesterday or starting today. It's all happening, I'm noticing at the elementary level mostly, and it's, you know, few and two at the middle high school.
So based on this standard, are we gonna be reaching capacity? Or close to it?
It's gonna bring us back to where we were in our numbers and so I'm gonna add it in before Monday, the chart that goes like this and then goes like that, but to where we were, you know, around two thousand thirteen. For capacity, do you mean like just some space?
Yeah, like where we need a school.
No, no, no.
Here's the thing.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll be okay.
Because of the truly choice.
Right, well, so Nipmuck, when it first opened, it probably had a thousand to eleven hundred kids. It was packed, but it had that many kids. Uh it now has about six, fifty six, seventy five, so we have room for more students. Clough Memorial, Memorial's pretty close to.
Memorial's a place that is closer and there, there are not any, there's never really, every space is used, so, I, you know, but at Misco, it's.
Misco.
There isn't, if you said, oh, we have to add another teacher or another here, you know, and add a few. You know, we're, I'm not saying, you know, this, we have to figure it out, like it's, it's pretty, there is an extra space particularly at Misco.
If you guys are looking to build a new school, this is a wonderful place, just throw that out there. Shouldn't get some quarters in your pocket or something.
It's not an proposal for today.
You know, right now, I believe we'd be in capacity to add, you know, a few hundred kids before we start to reach that point where they're falling.
The only question I have on this is, is we, it looks very linear to me. And I think that's the concern of everything is that based upon some things said, is I could easily see in the next couple of years it trending out at a much higher rate. And that's because of what you were talking about and like, you know, you just look around and when the hospital we joined, where I live, and, you know, everybody around is, is up. They're, they're all kids. I mean, I don't see anybody lying.
Which is, is this.
They do update these every year.
For Northbridge Road?
Yeah.
So but the, the thing with Misco is that some vision, the next phases, are they in Mendon, Upton or Northbridge?
Well, they've got, it's still, it's fifty-five. From what I know, it's fifty-four houses in Mendon and then there were eleven left in Northbridge.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
I mean, there, there is a lot of land in Mendon potentially could be developed. It hasn't been and Mendon has kind of resisted that. But at the same time, like I said, I mean, you know, my kids are done with the school district, as you guys know, they're already, but at some point, I'm not going to be in my house and somebody else with kids probably will be in my street. It's kind of like that. Most of the kids on my street are all, like the youngest one, I think is a junior in high school. Eventually, kids are going to start moving into these places. And I know all the people that were the parents of my kids' friends, they're all on the same boat. Their kids are going and they've got these big four bedroom houses. Eventually, they're going to get bought by younger people with kids.
It just seems like a pandemic.
Right?
It just seems like the pandemic change of the demographics there, as people alluded to here, is that there's these exits from, let's say, the rest of the fur around here because obviously it's cheaper.
Yeah.
And a lot of them. Not much brought up. Relatively speaking, and I can't tell you how many of my, my sons, who, friends of theirs have moved further. Because of that reason, and all of them have kids. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's.
It's true.
Just concerned like, you know, in a few years, it's not going to be so linear. It's going to be.
Well, so they, we, they, so this is NASDAQ. They come in, you know, we have a membership with them and they do this update every year project. So it's not exact, but they look at lots that they look at, you know, building as well that's going on and, you know, give us sense.
I mean, it's, you know, but, yeah, I mean, there's no doubt that I think going forward, there is going to be increased costs just because more kids. As far as the facility, which is where Normal's going, I think that we're okay, although like I said, Misco is a really tough building. It has a lot of issues, so. Assuming we can continue to keep it going the way we're going. I mean, Misco was probably built when Lonnie was there, right? Well, but was there, you already went on.
I, Misco?
Yeah, well, now the old, originally it was Nipmuck.
Yeah, I went there.
Yeah.
I was one of the last classes. This was ninety-seven was the first class that went there?
Yeah, the new one.
I was, I graduated.
The building originally was built in fifty-eight, so it's a seventy-year-old building.
On the fuel, so on our contract with our transportation, is there, are we set on those numbers or is there a template for their fuel surcharge?
We don't have a fuel surcharge in our contract.
So they're just whatever, but that's our rate, that's our rate. So they should, they'll consume that?
Yes, yes, absolutely. And they, that I had, I'd never liked putting fuel adjustment clauses in. The bus companies want to put it in and it can help you when the prices drop. But when they go up like this, you actually.
Oh, I know, right. And it just, I mean, it just, it must be very difficult for them. Hopefully they, you know what, I'm sure they've done it. They've, they've.
I mean. We are in year three of our contract next year. This year is year two, so we'll have to go out to bid. You know, we have, the bus contracts, you typically do a three-year contract with a two-year us option for us to extend it. A lot of times we go out to bid after three years just to see if we can get a better price, but quite honestly, nobody except the current company is going to bid on Mendon Upton because these companies don't bid against each other. So there's no competition whatsoever.
That sounds like a price fix.
Lonnie? T I in Iowa.
And what's the, what's the click that makes Upton so much higher? They just have more students?
What you mean as far as the minimum contribution?
Yeah.
Right. So there's three factors that play into that. So the way calculations work, first of all, the minimum local contribution and foundation budget, they look at several things. One is per capita income, one is assessed property value, and one is target share. And Upton was lower in target share than Mendon was, so they're giving themselves, yeah, they give themselves a bigger increment to go up. When you calculate the local assessments, you basically take out all of the predetermined amounts. So the district funding, chapter seventy, transportation reimbursement, all that stuff is taken out and then the balance is split by the enrollment. So therefore, you start off with Mendon going up to sixty and Upton going up five sixty, then you add everything else on top of it. So they drive higher. So quite honestly, you kind of have to build backwards from what a town can, can't afford. Many years, I would be told, well, Mendon is going to give you fifty percent. It's going to be three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So you start with that and then those kind of bad fill in to get what everybody's. This year, because it was so skewed, Upton is really the one that's determining where, that's why Mendon is so much lower. If Upton could give us more, we would probably be asking for more from Mendon, but they were, you know, that's pushing it for them. They have to come up with five hundred and twenty thousand. So just like it would push up, you know, then.
Then my last question is, on that salary slide, that was, that was a salary line, not the salary, or is that salary increase, that nine hundred?
That's the increase. Yeah, our salaries are about twenty-three million dollars.
I can give you the exact amount. I got the.
No, I'm looking at that, just in case somebody asks.
I wasn't sure if it was.
No, we have about four hundred and thirty employees. The two and a half percent was in the teachers' contract. Some were two, some were three, depending on where they were. I mean, we did a little bit, we negotiated all the contracts a year ago. Quite honestly, one of the things that's pushing these, some of the salaries, especially for like paraprofessionals, is that they were barely making above minimum wage and it's, you know, you can't pay people that are working with students, you know, twelve hours an hour. So we had to make some adjustments to accommodate for the fact that minimum wage is being pushed up.
Thank you. That's all right.
So on that, I don't have a purview to contract negotiations and the current states are of all that stuff. I do have a bunch of teachers in my family, so I'm well aware of contractual situations. On the other end, right, the two and a half COLA and, you know, step changes and all that good stuff. You know, when I look at the, the, the rates here in the list, you know, Nipmuck was at the lowest, that three, four, three percent increase and Clough had almost ten percent increase. You know, I'm seeing the assistant superintendent salary increase by seventeen point six percent. I'm sure there's a lot of people in town who would love to have their salary rise by seventeen, six percent this year. It's. So I guess as the townspeople look at some of these increases and, you know, we're decreasing textbook spending by fifty-seven thousand dollars, but yet we're giving an additional twenty-one thousand dollars to administrative salaries, right? The, the value there, it, some of it is hard for me to digest.
I can, I can tell you, part of the reason textbooks are down is because we do, we lease, we do, you know, e-textbooks, right? There are six-year leases, but they won't let you pay it out over six years. They may pay it in two or three, so it's paid off. Because we paid it last year of the issue. So that's why. So it's reallocation. As far as the salaries go, the reason you might see Clough higher than say, Nipmuck is because Nipmuck staff doesn't have many younger staff that are moving in steps.
Yep.
So, you know, as you know, lanes are additional degree status. Anybody can get those, but the steps are, there's only like twelve steps. So once you've been in the district twelve or thirteen years, you're a top step. I would say sixty-five percent, seventy percent of our staff is at top step, step. But that's changing as people are retiring. And we did have a rash of retirees because people just couldn't be able to handle it. You know, whatever, it got to a point where it's like, okay, this is enough. I've given my time.
Okay. Yeah.
Any more questions?
I can stop sharing.
On the electrical service savings, that's all due to the LED and solar details that were on that first. The electrical service savings, that was all due to the solar.
Um, well, no, yeah, the LED, I'm trying to stop sharing. Lonnie, you want to come on?
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute. I think I got it. It's that X there, right?
You got it.
Now we get to see Mike taking them down. When we did the LEDs, the way that was a project through National Grid and basically you pay for it, but they financed it interest-free over five years. They're paid off. That's why you're seeing. So that was, you know, several hundred thousand dollars of LEDs they put in over the period to pay it off. So you're seeing that. And we did just add a third net metering last year. So majority of electricity is coming during now. So that's a help that it's being offset by clear increases on the maintenance side up.
And then my last question was on the sixty thousand tech maintenance other, so the sixty thousand dollar increase, is that due to the new one-to-one iPad program? Or obviously we're diving much more deep into a proliferation of technology within the district.
Let me take a look and I'll tell you because I don't, I don't have all this stuff memorized. Remember I told you that today on the call? Yeah. It's not quite there anymore.
So this was one of the lines I was. Towards the end, to the end of the. Uh, it was just technology maintenance other.
Big net increase, so sixty thousand dollars. I have to go back to my details on that. Because I created this category to sort of summarize everything. Yeah, no, it's not the account. I need to actually go to the specific. I have a much more detailed spreadsheet. Tell you what it is. Well, it's because we have to replace two data servers that are outdated. That's the cost financed over, I believe, four years, maybe, say it was like three hundred thousand.
What kind of server?
Data servers, the data service of the house. Joe, they have to give you a more detailed explanation of it, but we had their existing equipment that's been there for seven or eight years. It's starting to fail. Needs to be updated. So I believe that's already been worked out. I guess we also.
I guess why would we, would we move that equipment, look at AWS or some.
Uh, but I think we do have some cloud stuff, but this is meant to be driven from something on site.
I can ask, I can have a quick call with Joe, just see what he's, to get a better understanding.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, data service on site these days is like, why?
Yeah, yeah, I agree, but I can, I, I don't want to answer without.
Oh, yeah, 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 there could be.
I'm sure there is. Like I said, I'm not the technical guy.
Yeah, I'll, I'll shoot Joe an email and just, just go.
Last year, going into this year, we had to replace all of the Wi-Fi spots all throughout all the buildings. So that was another increase from last year that's carried over into this year. J L A Q, L E A C U. L A C U. J L E A C U. I can actually email.
Yeah, and you are asking.
Anything else?
What was that one?
Uh, just tell, ask them what the data server makes a difference. I don't know what it is. Because that was the new addition.
Thank you.
You know, because in that same account, there, there's listings on switches, there's pieces on server that we know about Sonic Law, firewall support, VMware, other various hardware replacements. So we do have a reduction because E-Rate is a federal program. We apply for every year. It's offset to help reduce it a little bit. But yeah, he's right. Joe's one that can answer that better.
Okay.
Anything else?
Other questions?
Is there anything that, like, you don't have information on yet that you'd like to have information on? I'm going out of the living, hoping that the hundred and sixty thousand net increase is probably in the budget, so have a lot of drop. Yeah. Your drop and not ours. Our goal is to have, you know, kind of a smooth sailing budget, you know, I'm hoping that the town's in relatively decent shape.
Well, thank you.
Well.
If you have other questions, send it to us and we can look some. Thank you for having us.
Thank you both so much. Really appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys so much.
Okay, next we have. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. Next we have the Council on Aging. I assume that will be Amy.
Yes, Amy Wilson Kent, and I've got my, one of my co-chairs, Peg Nogera is on the call as well. And I'm sorry, I tried several times, tried several times logging on and was unable to.
Well, we can hear you just fine, so that's, that's good.
Okay. Now, are you, Mark, are you there in person? Are you?
I, I am not. I am remote.
Okay, okay. No, I was hoping.
Most people are.
Yeah, I, I, I like to show you with the sweater. I was hoping that, you know, I don't know if all the new FinCom members know the Senior Center and what we do, but I was hoping to meet them in person, but that'll have to wait till, for another time.
Sounds good. Well, thank you for being here tonight and you can begin when you're ready.
Okay, so some folks may not know, the Senior Center itself is just thirty, minor thirty-two years old. But the services that have been provided for men and seniors were spanned much longer than that, probably back to the sixties and seventies, where things were done at the American Legion, the St. Michael's Church at the Clough School. And, you know, when we finally were able to come together and have a place for our own, it was, it was certainly built for a much smaller population. We certainly make do and we serve men and residents of all ages. We serve caregivers, the economically disadvantaged. We have a lot of children that are involved in programs and volunteering at the center. But mostly we serve seniors as well we should. And our population currently is just about twenty-five percent of Mendon's total population. And we're, we're serving this population with one full-time position and three part-time, eighteen-hour-a-week positions, positions. And we, I'm, I'm very proud of our staff. We could not do what we do if it were not for the many volunteers we have. The last two years, our volunteers have been probably about forty, forty-five on average, forty-five volunteers because of the pandemic. Prior to that, we boasted about eighty to a hundred and twenty volunteers in any given year to accomplish the things that we do. And we don't ask for much. This year, we actually came in with the, with the same budget we've put, put in for the last two years with one exception. But before I get to that, I just wanted to, you know, let folks know some of the things we do and, you know, and if I could, we, we had our COA monthly meeting today and we have been batting around our mission statement for the last couple of years, trying to, trying to like embrace it or tweak it or, and we've, you know, had to pick it up, put it down. But today we picked it up again. And so I wanted to, if I could, just let you know, you know, our mission statement is that the council, the Mendon Senior Center and Council on Aging, the purpose is to assess the needs of Mendon senior community and to respond to those needs by developing, promoting, and encouraging new and existing programs and services that allow for enrichment, independence, quality of life, and the fostering of healthy aging with grace and dignity. And for any of you that know us, know what we do, what we do behind the scenes, we do it with confidence, confidentiality. You can, I'm sure, attest that we do it very well. And so I'm here today to say, you know, if, if you'd like to know more about our programs and services, you can look at the information that I, you know, downloaded into the system. And I know it's for both. I put in some case examples of things that we've done during the pandemic. Pandemic really put us, tested us all. I think we, we did exceedingly well. I think we're exhausted. We were without some, we were without some of our employees for a good part of the pandemic. And fortunately, they're back, so we're fully staffed right now. And we want to ask this year, we've asked for no increase in our expenses. They're the same, they're, our budget essentially, our expense budget is probably what it was when I came on board fourteen years ago. Hard to say, but that's true. We don't ask for a lot. We use a lot of grants. We seek grants when we can. But that takes time, serving our clients. Serving our clients takes a lot of time, especially the outreach that we do. And I want to say that what we're asking for is, we're asking for twelve additional hours for our outreach position to bring it up to thirty hours a week, currently it's at eighteen. We started it at a grant ten years ago for six hours a week for two years to build up our, our numbers, to find out what the needs were, to find out what the unmet needs were. And we have some really good statistics from, you know, year to year. And even during the pandemic, the outreach numbers really didn't falter. Of course, we weren't able to have people into the Senior Center. So instead of having ten thousand people come in during the year, we were only, we only, you know, had maybe a smaller number of three thousand five hundred that we interacted with one-on-one. We had to find very creative ways to reach the rest of the population. But outreach's numbers have really not faltered since the position, you know, began ten years ago. But we need to do more, we need to be proactive, being reactive, which is what we mainly do because we can only assist those that come to us and, and it's a situation of need. But if we could go out, if we could, you know, offer trainings to help people, to bring people out that are, before they reach crisis mode, then we would certainly be doing a better service for, for everyone and it would be less exhausting, truthfully, because it's, you know, we get a call from a neighbor, we get a call from the police, come and tell us about someone in a situation. The fire department has assisted someone time and time again in their home. And when we're finally brought into the scene, we can, you know, our outreach staff can make a difference by, you know, getting services in there, getting the client to consider perhaps moving to a different location. It takes time though, it takes time instance, with each instance, but also sometimes, just recently, someone that we've assisted three years ago and we've been kind of holding their hand, they're, we finally got the call that they've got housing. Unfortunately, it's over in Holliston, but we have such little amount of housing here. But this person, at least they're going to be able to be in a safe circumstance, ten years though, three years. So, so just would like to say, we would really, we would really appreciate your consideration of our budget with an increase for twelve additional hours for our each position. And I need to have Kim possibly tweak the numbers because I think when we talked about it, we thought that we needed a full eighteen hours, but we don't, we have a grant for six hours through the state. So we're looking for twelve hours at a rate of, I believe it's twenty dollars and fifty eight cents to be able to bring more programs to the seniors and men and, and again, not to, not to constantly react to an emergency, but to, you know, to, to realize the situations before they come to that, that point.
Excellent, thank you so much, Amy. Are there questions from Select Montenio or the FinCom?
I don't have any questions at this time.
We have a hand from, from Nick Siantra. Go ahead, Nick.
Hi, thank you so much for your presentation. I just had a question on the, the actual numbers of the increase and calculation moving from part-time to full-time. Was that part of the, the ask of the request?
Do you know what? It's not that we want, it essentially does become full-time because we're, we're putting more hours in. But I think Kim can address that too. It's not, that's not what we, why we wanted the position to, you know, to make it full-time. But by adding twelve hours, it does become full-time, if that's what you're.
Yeah, I'm just curious of what the, the budget impact is beyond just the salary component.
Okay, I, I would ask Kim to address that if she would.
Kim can, yep, she's on mute, but she could certainly talk about it.
It's twenty two thousand and change. We budget for a family coverage for each person, you know, you know, we speculate on what they could possibly be, you know. We only offer two, really two types of coverage, either single or family, so it's one or the other. So if they happen to come in and they only need single, then, you know, we adjust this previous year or the next year. But right now, in the budget as it's presented in the book that you have, the most recent, it's, it's in there. It's in the health insurance number already, it's there.
That was my question, was it factored into the budget already? So, so thank you, Kim.
Thank you very much. Anything further? Nothing. Amy, thank you so much for, for that presentation and we will take that into consideration.
Okay, and if everyone does have any further questions, please, please don't hesitate to contact us.
Thank you, thank you Peg as well for joining us.
Okay, good night, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, we are done with everything other than, Lonnie, did you have an update on the Brothers of the Brush?
Do you want to close? Not to interrupt, I was going to close the, I'm screaming. All of them.
All right.
Mine.
Yes.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
You guys don't want to hear about the Brothers of the Brush party? I'm pretty sure it's going to be rocking good time.
So. Those are my books, I can give all my.
The update isn't huge, we do have a name, it is going to be called Rock the Block. So it's not just the Brush Block Party anymore. We're working on, spoke to public safety, we're going to re-change, we're going to redo a couple of things around the area to make things maybe flow a little bit better. We're working on the carnival to put up to the corner, not sure if we, I don't want to talk about that before, but that is actually probably going to happen now, hopefully get them in the night before so that they can have the carnival that Friday night, that will draw some people to town as well, so that they'll see the advertising for the party the next day. We're meeting with fireworks folks, the fire chief, so we can put the plan together because it's going to be a new location to shoot them off from behind the building. Rather than that was going to try to keep the, the, the crowd down this way during fireworks, instead of flooding it up towards Route sixteen and causing more grief up there than they would need for that additional amount of time. The, I've spoken to Kim, we're working on how we can allow the full range of the party or the, or the, the area that's going to be roped off to be utilized that, you know, you can have alcoholic beverages throughout and also allowing more than just the beer and wine trailer that we usually have that can spread out to some of the other vendors that may have a specialty drink, that their business sells a thing, you know, like the zoo, if they have a booth, they have some sort of zoo juice or something like that. So we're, we're looking at those, those items so that we can try to make it a little bit more of a not corralled to, you drink over here and you eat over here, just make more, a better flow and keep things going. We're also going to, talking to public safety, we're looking at hiring private security, a small private security force that would be more plainclothes, just kind of walking around, looking for underage drinking, overdrinking, things along that, those lines, so that we're not burdened. But the police officers are going to be pretty burdened with our, you know, the, the, the intersections that are going to be closed and to not have them have to deal with that as well, almost if you would, our own set of bouncers. So we're moving along with all those pieces, everything's coming together well. The bands are going to set up across the street in the lower lot over here at the post office building. We've got a bunch of bands, the Peach Eaters, I think is, are, are committed already, I don't know if you guys have ever heard them, they're really good. And then some other local bands, we're going to try to keep the music kind of flowing all day. And I was, you know, starting at whatever time it starts, I think it's noon time-ish or something. And yeah, now we're just working on the vendors, so we'll be looking for donations and more donations for time probably on the day, so. Be a lot of help.
Okay, is this where I jump in with sheer horror and panic? Yes, I've already emailed Dave LaBonte and Maya, what I'm going to need most of all in order, from last time to this time, I need a detailed map of the areas that you're actually picturing because what they're going to cover, they need to see that in order to really determine the type of coverage and where it goes and why. And then they're going to propose, I can already tell you what's going to happen, that you move it on to property that's at the corner and then you're going to say no, and that's fine, but we just need to, and they're going to then require us to do certain things, right? Bang, bang, bang. So the sooner you get me a map that shows where the alcohol will be, how it's going to be fenced, the fenced in piece was a big part last time about the beer garden thing that I remember. So those are the things that I need in order to keep going forward on, like getting the coverages we need.
Sure, yeah, I got that, I'll send it right over, thanks.
Is the date still September tenth?
September tenth, yep.
That's great.
That would be horrible. I feel for those little.
Cool.
Thanks, Kim.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, this field right up back here, so you'll be able to stay down here in the band area and the whole food area and, you know, see if right over. Yep. Then we'll sing the Star Spangled Banner after.
Is there anything else before I get up?
No, that's it. It's the only party I got playing. All right, thank you guys, thanks guys.
Accept the motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second, all in favor.
Video, aye.
Real aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.